We're we're set on that.
All rise for the play.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We'll try to enunciate for those listening at home. Uh, we'll call the meeting to order here with a determination to form by roll call. Councillor Bumgarner, Evers, Ferguson is absent. Uh, I am here and Patternist.
Here.
We do have a forum called the Mean to Order and we'll begin the meeting with a public forum. Uh, this is the time when it's appropriate to address council. Uh, we ask when you do address council that you state your name for the record. Uh, speaking time will be limited to five minutes, but uh, what?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, you're right. But uh, you know, if uh, more more information needs to be gathered, we can, we can definitely direct staff to um, gather more information. So now is the time for uh, for the public forum. Hi, Jill.
I'm Jill Monson, a resident and former employee of the City of Olivia. I resigned on July twenty fourth and requested to be added to the agenda but was denied. So I have three minutes to um, speak in this public forum. I left a job I enjoyed because of my former coworkers. I've been fully retaliated against and sexually harassed. I had to be prescribed anti-anxiety medication just to make it to work. I was physically sick and my mental health was suffering, so I chose me over the job. Um, I'm going to show you, I have a text message that the city's HR, Jasmine Miller, sent me back in December twenty three of two thousand and twenty-two. When you click on the last line of the text where there's a power outage, um, a picture of a naked, large, well-endowed black man appears. The picture is going to be in a sealed envelope attached to the text because um, I feel like some of you are probably like me and don't really care to see that. If you wonder why I didn't say anything sooner, it's because I feared the bullying and retaliation. I've been bullied and retaliated against since my return from medical leave. I have nothing to lose now. The picture is pornographic, disgusting, and racist. I'm sure nothing will result of this and some employees are untouchable. There are so many sexual connotations and exposures in this building. I don't have time for everything and have been advised not to give all my information. I will use other avenues to inform the community. The intern from last year was told by a few city employees that sex on prom night is okay. They also continue to inquire about her personal life. The current intern gets to hear about employees' breasts, among other things. Interns should be here to learn in a professional atmosphere. This is far from professional. There are numerous items I could disclose with regards to the lack of accountability and professionalism in this building. For instance, I monitored five days of bank deposits. Four were wrong. One was missing a two hundred dollar check. One is off by eight dollars, the next eight, ten dollars, and the third was nine dollars. That's twenty-seven dollars and three business days, not including the check. What do they do? They take money out of the petty cash fund that, by the way, is not trapped. To me, this is a huge concern as a resident and an employee, but the current administration doesn't seem to care. The residents of Olivia deserve to know the waste of what is happening in this building. The lack of accountability and professionalism is horrific. Like I mentioned earlier, I have other avenues I'll be using to bring up my story. If any residents would like to have a discussion with me privately, I am willing. And I will give you the news and like I said, it's sealed. You want to hurt, you're welcome to look there if you want to. Jonathan, you probably don't need to do it.
Thank you, Jill. Anybody else care to address council? Seeing none, we'll close down the public forum and open up the regular meeting again here and uh, go through the setting of the agenda. Uh, we all have the agenda in front of us for a few days here. Call for a motion to approve the agenda or obviously uh, if there's any other additions to be made now is the time.
It's removed. Second.
Motion's been made by Bumgarner, seconded by Patternist to approve tonight's agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull same sign. Uh, agenda has been approved as written. Move down to the consent agenda, which includes regular minutes of July fifteen. Uh, resolution eighty-two, that's amending the city's schedule of regular meetings to be kept on file. Resolution eighty-three, authorizing the City of Olivia to submit a point source implementation and grant application. Resolution eighty-four, approving city administrator as the Olivia-designated MMPA representative. Uh, accepting a donation from FM Bank. Um, Rendall, uh, resolution eighty-six, the Rendall County voter agreement. Ordinance eight, amending chapter ninety-two of the Olivia City Code regarding assessable current services. Uh, a public works purchase order for crack ceiling. A utility accounts coordinator position description. Uh, purchasing agent agreement with Marcus Construction. A Marco relocation quote and July dispersments. Um, call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Remove. Second.
Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by Patternist to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull same sign. Consent agenda carries as written. Moving down to the discussion items, here we have Justin here uh, to talk uh, to us about some amendments to the RO softening uh, project.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, just by way of introduction for those watching, Justin Black, city engineer. Uh, in front of us this evening is a proposal related to the water treatment plant. Uh, if you recall, the city had uh, a point source um, requirement at the wastewater plant for chlorides, for salts. And the way to address that was to deal with it on the water side, soften the water so it's less salt usage. So this is something that's been in the process for quite some time. We had a pretty tight compliance schedule to develop a set of plans for those improvements at the water treatment plant. And we met that timeline to get those plans submitted for that requirement. While we were submitting, preparing those plans, we did a second pilot study. So I'm going back in time now, what a year. We did a second pilot study at the plant uh, to take a look at what ozone pretreatment might do to that reverse osmosis process. And what it did was, was pretty fantastic from the standpoint of making those membranes last a lot longer. Uh, we didn't include that in design at the time, so we could meet the compliance schedule. But we knew at some point in time we would come back before the, the next funding cycle to include that um, ozone process as pretreatment. So if you can envision that the, the footprint that we're making, the improvements uh, in the plan for the RO we're adding onto the building, uh, none of that will change. So that design that we've already completed for the city will remain intact. This goes on the front end of the plant as a pretreatment process. It helps break down some of the organics and tannins that you have in your water. Like I said, when we did that pilot study, the ozone pretreatment allowed those membranes to last a lot longer. Now, our, our thought process is, is get this designed and included so that we can include it in the funding package. Um, for future funding as part of that PSEC grant, but also PFA funding. So kind of the whole package. Uh, so that from an upfront cost standpoint, hopefully we get the funding so that covers the upfront cost. But in the future, when we look at operation and maintenance, this ozone pretreatment is going to make those membranes last a lot longer. Uh, so that you don't, won't have that high, higher O and M cost. So that's, that's kind of why we're coming back. We knew about this earlier on, but we needed to meet that compliance schedule. We got that initial smell done, so we met that compliance schedule. And now we're coming back uh, to get those plans uh, completed to include that pretreatment process upfront. Uh, as far as the schedule goes, we did include a schedule in the proposal. Uh, we're looking at having the final design completed uh, by middle of December. Uh, that way we can have this new plant set ready for um, the funding packages that we'll see come out later this year. Hopefully we have a bonding bill this year. Uh, we will fund some of these funding packages. Um, and if there is no funding available, we would continue to wait until we can get some grant dollars. So that scenario hasn't changed. But uh, I know that's a ton of information. There was uh, like a six-page letter. I can condense that a little bit. Um, but if you happen to answer any questions, otherwise the action item would be to offer us just to, to add that uh, design piece, if you will.
How much uh, life is this supposed to add to the membranes or is that just completely hypothetical?
I, I don't have, I, I thought you might ask that question and I couldn't get an exact answer as to um, a specific timeline. Uh, but I, I do know that when they did that pilot study, it was a significant uh, amount of additional life for those membranes. Uh, they just didn't follow as quickly, they didn't plug as quickly.
Because, because they'll clean them even if you didn't have the ozone?
You could, yes. If you don't have, you just have to do it more often.
All right.
And they're not easy to clean.
Right, right.
Yes. So what they did when the first pilot study happened, they plugged quicker than they, they thought. So they actually did, they, they told me it was an autopsy, so they took the memory, they don't come apart, determined why did they plug so quickly? And it was because some of the tannins and organics that you have in your wa- water. And the uh, that pointed towards, we need some type of pretreatment to get those broken down a little bit more. Uh, and that's when they initiated the second pilot study at that point. However, we were far enough along in the schedule where we needed to get those plans submitted. But they will last longer um, just because of the way that that pretreatment process starts to break some of those down. Uh, they won't plug those filters quite as quickly.
So the tannins get passed through the membranes now if they get treated with ozone?
Uh, no, but you can backwash them easier. So you can backwash those filters easier. They don't get plugged in there quite as tight. Um, it's, it's kind of the process.
Is backwashing the cleaning event or is that a normal thing and then you, on top of backwashing, you have some more bonus cleaning?
I, well, it gets to the point where they, they, you can backwash them, but they don't backwash as, as easily, so they plug more quickly, so then you have to completely replace it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like a pool filter. So eventually, if we're using the pool filter analysis, eventually your filter media becomes so clogged, you gotta completely replace that. You know, media would be a good analogy um, for that, that type of process. So again, adding more longevity. And if we can include this in the funding package now, rather than add it later when you're dealing with your own money, let's use funding money to include that. It's, it's kind of the way we're looking at this for, for the city.
Yeah, that makes sense. So um, you know, let's say disaster strikes and we don't get the funding on this. How many membrane replacements will it take in order for us to recoup the cost of this ozone concept?
I guess at this point, the way we would package it is we would include this as part of the overall project. So it would not be a separate piece or an alternate. It would be just the project.
But do you have a sense for how much it would save? Like, what's the ROI on the ozone?
I don't know what the ROI would be. Um, you know, we're estimating the, right now, the plant cost is estimated at three point eight million. The ozone is about another one point five million in construction. Uh, I guess one way to look at it is if you, if that one point five million is covered by the PSEC grant at eighty percent, um, the return on your investment would be pretty quick because most of that cost is going to be covered by outside dollars.
Do you know how much a membrane costs?
I don't. No, these aren't good questions. I don't have the answer to, but we can get the answers.
Good to know.
But yeah.
Nice to know.
Any other questions from the council? Oh, I mean, it's all kind of dependent on us getting some sort of funding source, right?
Absolutely. And that's why we haven't moved on the project to date is because we haven't gotten any funding. Uh, there was no bonding bill, so it's, it's in a holding pattern. And like I said, we wouldn't, we wouldn't structure this as an alternate. This would be part of the project that we would take forward for the funding package. So it's, it's a complete project. And um, like I said, if we, once we get the funding to pay for this, um, yeah.
It's been identified as a need that wasn't.
And that was just on the consent agenda with that point source implementation grant application resolution.
If you can give like a range on where an expected ROI would be, I realize that we might not be able to know until we're actually doing it, but.
That may be, that may be part of it, Matt, is just the, once you get into it, you know, there's the, the, the um, the initial studies that were done with the pilot study gives you a sense, but we could maybe try to extrapolate from there and give you a better idea.
Yeah, that would be great.
Good questions.
Any other good questions? Or bad ones?
Appreciate the update, Justin.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to address the corner roof situation at the Olivia City Library.
Yeah, so I mentioned this at the last meeting. Um, we've now had two separate companies look at the library roof just to get multiple opinions. Both companies agree that this roof is at the end of its useful life. Um, with a particularly emphasis, West Central Roofing says the lower portion of the roof is the top first priority, which is why um, West Central Roofing gave us three separate quotes, is in case if you wanted to kind of chunk off parts of this project. Um, whereas the quote from ASH Roofing is for just the entire flat roofing system of the two. Um, so the difference between the two is Ash Roofing is proposing a sixty mil EPDM roofing system. And then West Central Roofing is proposing a Duralast roofing system, which is slightly more durable than EPDM. Um, it's environmentally friendly. I learned that as well. Um, also kind of the differences between the two quotes is West Central Roofing, there's a twenty-year labor, labor and materials warranty by manufacturer with ASH, it's the fifteen-year warranty will be issued after the final inspection.
What was West Central's twenty?
West Central's is twenty, yeah. Um, they included three different quotes. So one for the lower roof, one for the upper roof, and then also one for that stucco ephes kind of around the sides. That's really flaking off and obviously water's getting behind there. Since you can't see it, their proposal for that solution is just to rip it off and kind of put up a membrane. Again, you can't see it from the street. It doesn't necessarily need to look all that pretty as long as it keeps water out. Um, so that's kind of, those are the main differences between the two um, different proposals. We are still waiting to hear back from the insurance company to see if this can be, if any part of it can be covered by insurance. And then if you guys give us the thumbs up that you do want to move forward with this proposal, um, especially if you give us kind of the range that you're looking at, whether you're just wanting to focus on the lower roof, whether you want to do the whole project. We will come back on August nineteenth, having brainstormed a couple of different funding options for you all to approve to move forward with roof replacement. But we want to make sure that council is committed to this direction before doing the brainstorming of the different funding pots.
And both contractors thought that all three roofs should be replaced.
Sooner rather than later, yeah. The roof is at the end of its useful life. I mean, it seems like it has been twenty to thirty years since you probably put on a library roof. Um, so it, it is time. Whether it's just one chunk this year and then we look at it in our budget workshop session to figure out where the rest of the money is coming from, or whether we try to do it all at once is entirely up to you. Um, but it, it needs to be tackled.
So my preference would be to do this all at once because that's probably the most cost-effective way to do it. We'll probably wait until next year when we've actually budgeted for it and have everything identified. I think it, I, I think that's the prudent way to do this.
My only concern is about snow and melting through a leaky roof. Just letting you know.
Makes tons of sense. I get it.
There's water.
Why is it leaking now?
Um, they, they have had quite a few leaks. This is what brought this forefront to my attention. I understand it was examined uh, last year in the spring, so this seems to be a habitual spring problem. Is with the spring rain, you're getting leaks throughout the ceiling. Um, and so it's leaking in several places at this moment.
Are we seeing deterioration anywhere else caused by this?
Um, it looks to be coming through and then they've kind of strategically had buckets placed where it's coming from. Um, it's obviously wrecking the ceiling tiles. Those are drop ceiling tiles. Um, I can't speak if it, if it's damaged any of the other material. I think they've moved the books away. Um, but I can't speak to that part.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, you know, with Landon's idea, wait until next year. You know, we're not causing more damage to the building by waiting.
Correct. These quotes won't be good next year.
Yeah, obviously.
So.
Landon, why do you want to, what's the advantage of waiting?
Uh, well, this has been a known problem for a long time and apparently wasn't deemed important enough to move on a year ago. While we'd have time to, while we would have had time to budget for it properly and put it in with our spending plans for twenty twenty-four. So do it properly and do it twenty twenty-five then. That being said, if it's an emergency, you're going to wreck stuff by not fixing it, then we should fix it, but it's just disappointing that. This again seems like another area where we waited until something got to the state where it's an emergency to deal with it instead of using support off for yourself ahead of time. Which I understand you were not here for this and it, it don't happen. Again, not throwing blame at it. It's just disappointing because like, when we talked about the, was it the bucket truck or whatever that was, couldn't wait through the normal process. We had to do it now until we kind of put a kibosh to that. It seems like everything we do follows the same pattern.
It's reactive, not proactive.
It's frustrating. And I don't think it's a great way to uh, run a city. Oh, run a, run a city, have a plan, stick to a plan, anything having to do with a plan, really. It's like the opposite of a plan. It's just kind of a, it's how I run my personal life. No one wants that. So.
Well, I am concerned that if we don't fix the roof, that the problem gets worse, you know? Because if we could wait, that would be nice. We don't really know if we can or not, but we know we got a leaky roof. And so I'm concerned that if we wait, a leaky roof becomes a very leaky roof and then we're up against it in a worse way and have to re-quote it and whatever. So I, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
How does this sound? Can we, can we as a council commit that sometime in the next twelve months? We'll be looking at a, at a, at a roof situation, so, so Elizabeth has some freedom to go out and look for funding. So, so we'd at least have our, our commitment to put a roof on that thing?
Yeah, definitely.
So would you like me, all right, so I guess I'm to kind of, I want to make sure that obviously we get this problem resolved sooner rather than later. Particularly because we're moving some of city office, some of city functions to the library as well. Um, we'll come back next week to, since we know kind of the prices that we're looking at. And I can have some discussion with these contractors as well to get their professional opinion of what, what this looks like if we push it to next spring. And if their recommendation is, this is going to get a lot worse before it gets better in six months, we'll also come with better funding options.
So what do you think the roof salesmen are going to say about the roof?
I don't know.
I mean, I think like, they understand that, I mean, it's going to cost more money next year, so they get a, they could get a bigger amount that year.
Their costs will have gone up next year too.
Yeah. But again, it, obviously this is a habitual problem.
Um, that again, we've known about for years and now it's become an hard to see. Apparently we've known about for years.
Why did you mention that at the budget meeting?
I think last year there were, there were some, some maintenance items that uh, well, there were some, there were some some roofing maintenance that was, was attempted that obviously didn't.
Yeah, I remember something.
Results we needed.
I remember something being done over there, but like, again, this was foreseeable in some form or another, that a thirty-year-old library with, with a flat roof needed a roof.
So I'm not coming to August nineteenth with solutions. We're dealing with it at a budget workshop. Is that what I mean? Is that a consensus I'm hearing or no?
Well, and you've got the money, we don't have the bond for it. Is that good?
Well, and we're looking at, we're trying to, we're getting um, insurance to come out hopefully soon to see if we can get any insurance um, to cover a portion, a portion of the project.
Process is started.
No, not yet.
But that's if we give you directions to, yes, we want to fix a roof, then you look for grants, look for all the things we might be able to do.
Yeah. Say grants will get, I've never seen a, very rarely you see a grant process that would get done that quickly. To the point where we would be doing construction yet this year.
I mean, I, I keep coming back to, we, we have a leaky roof, there won't be stuff out of the way in the library. We're going to be moving functions over there for the rebuild here.
I think it's, yeah. The more I think about it, the more it's.
Yeah, because it's a problem to do.
We, we have to, yes, it's disappointing that it's way this long, but we have to do something.
And I understand the desire to be proactive. I, I can assure you, I share your desire to be as proactive as possible. Um,
But it's not possible.
Unfortunately, this is, this is not something I had the foresight or seen.
No, it's fine. It's a needed repair whether it gets done in six, in six weeks, six months, twelve months, whatever. Obviously, yeah. Wrapping up, baby, whatever. So.
So direction to staff would be to uh, identify how big of an emergency the situation is and also identify how, what, what, how this uh, where this comes out of the budget.
I think the compromise here could also be, I mean, the lower roof is the first priority. That seems to be the most. So if that's the emergency situation that we want to respond to first and then budget or the upper roof and the squillight, that could be a good compromise.
The other thing you could ask the contractor too is like, if we do the whole thing, is there a price for it instead of doing it in a few weeks?
Yeah.
And that would help like, make the decision for you to just do a piece of it or.
Do you feel comfortable with that direction?
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we're moving down to committee reports and staff reports. Uh, do we have any reports from staff?
Sure, we have a couple of things. Um, as was mentioned, our previous utility council manager last day with the city was on July twenty-fourth. Um, you all approved a position description today, and so that will be posted starting tomorrow. Um, I want to just congratulate all city staff as well as community members and volunteers on a really successful Corn Capital Days week. Um, it was my first one. It was a lot of fun. It was hot. Um, but it also would not have been made possible without all of the volunteers and especially city staff who worked really hard throughout the year to get a lot of those activities together, so I just want to highlight that. Um, the other things I want to put on your radar, this is your last meeting in City Hall. Our new location will be the Olivia Library Community Room. That will actually start next week. Um, with different meetings for EGA, for Planning Commission, for Partner Rec Board. So any committee meeting you have, please relocate, including press, to the Library Community Room. Um, August thirteenth, we have a primary election coming up. August fourteenth, City Hall will be closed. This is our moving day to our new location. So we will be closed on August fourteenth uh, to help move all of our office equipment. Um, they've installed new lighting there, which is really exciting. August fifteenth, we have the airport zoning kickoff meeting and outdoor movie that night, which is very exciting. And then we're looking at a budget, budget work session either August twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh. That is a Monday night or Tuesday night. Does anybody have a preference?
Monday.
You'll be out of town for a whole week. Do you want to do it the week before, on Thursday, the twenty-second? Is that a better day?
That could work, yeah.
How do people feel about August twenty-second? If memory serves me correctly, this is the long night.
Yeah.
Fourth day on the job, this is what I got to say.
And you learned.
And I learned. Should have learned about the library roof, apparently.
August twenty-second, you said?
Yes.
Good.
It would still be at five thirty, August twenty-second?
I don't have a way, so.
Okay. August twenty-second at five thirty then.
Tag over the meeting.
Budget work session. And I will again be held at the library. Not here. That's all I have reports. Our staff is.
Any other reports from staff?
There is a month-old pool report in the. It's been up, so. I'm pretty sure the pools have closed now for the summer.
Correct.
The construction started at the school, so it's more or less July was going really well as planned and uh, generally acceptable now because instruction and stuff.
Wonderful.
The end.
Any uh, any other reports from council?
I just have a question. Um, do we have PUC members lined up?
We are still recruiting for PUC. Yep. So anybody who has people who might be interested in serving, please let me know.
We need two more.
Uh, yeah. More. Um, I guess notices like communication. I guess notices or communications, the filing period is open for City Council. And it'll be open until 5:00 PM on August 13th.
All right. Just a couple of quick admits of information here. The chamber is having their annual golf event and, and networking event. Or I guess just, just plain old fellowship. That's going to be at the Olivia Golf Course, August 21st, starting at 1:00 PM if you want to golf. I believe the open house, you know, cocktail hour, I believe that's 5:30 PM. So invite members of the community to enjoy each other that night. Elizabeth already mentioned the movie in the park. Can you, can we read, what was that, the 13th?
Yes, that'll be the 15th Thursday night. And donations for the event have been generously provided by FNM Bank, Hometown Bank, and Olivia Hospital and Clinic. So we're really excited. Suzie is working on lining up some food trucks in advance too. So grab a blanket or some chairs, come on out. And I have it on very good authority. We're going to be spraying for mosquitoes the night before to make it an enjoyable experience for everyone.
It's gotten better out there, that's for sure. So also want to announce that Rendell County is going through their comprehensive planning process right now. And I would encourage anybody, any citizens of Olivia, Rendell County at all to participate with that. It's important that, that during this, this critical information gathering stage that we have a lot of, we cast a wide net for information in order to compile this comprehensive plan. So please go ahead and visit the Rendell County website there. They'll have a link for you to participate in, in their survey, I guess. And appreciate if you, if you engage with that. Do we have any other notices or communication? Any other businesses that come before the council? If not, a call for motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by Paternas, to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll in favor say aye. I'll oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.